Good evening. We'll call this meeting to order for the October 27th, 2022 Apple Valley City Council Meeting. I'd like to welcome both our in-person and virtual audiences to the meeting. Our in-person attendees, when your name is called, please approach the podium to address the council. For our virtual attendees during the meeting, if you have questions or comments for the audience participation portion of the meeting, please press the raise hand symbol, and the meeting organizer will let us know you'd like to speak. And with that, I would invite you all to rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to abide by the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under our own, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Still kind of fun to hear a full room do that.
And it's all good stuff. It is, it is.
Second item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. And Tom, I know we've got a couple of changes to note. You want to go through those?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We do have two suggested revisions to your agenda. Both of these are on the regular agenda. Under 5E, which is the item related to the bond sale, we do have some additional information on the bond sale, which has been set before you, and will be further discussed when we get to that item on the agenda. And then 5F, the floor and decor, we understand from the developer that this project is not quite ready. It will be brought back to you at the next meeting, at our next meeting on November the 10th. So that item should be removed from tonight's agenda, and we'll deal with that again in a couple of weeks.
Thanks, Tom. So with those changes, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
A motion.
Second.
Motion from Goodwin and a second from Grendal. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. The agenda passes. We'll move on to the audience participation portion of the meeting. This is for items not on the agenda. And we will start with our virtual audience. Meeting organizer, are there any, is there anyone who would like to speak to the audience participation portion?
Mayor, there is no one at this time wishing to speak.
Thank you. I did not see anyone on the sign-up sheet. Pam, did you notice if there was anyone? I did not. We would still offer to those in the room, is there anyone who would like to speak to the audience participation portion? Hearing none, we will close this and move on to our consent agenda. These items are considered routine. They'll be enacted with a single motion unless a council member or a citizen requests to pull an item. We'll start with the council members. Are there any items you would like to pull? Hearing none. Meeting organizer, are there any, are there any items the virtual audience would like to pull?
Mayor, there are none at this time.
Thank you. And for our in-person audience, are there any items you would like to pull from consent and discuss separately? Hearing none, I take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A motion.
Second.
Motion from Melander, a second from Bergman. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 And opposed. Consent agenda carries. And that brings us on to our regular agenda. We will start with a fun item, at least for me, item 5A, which is the inductions and oath of office of three new police officers. And Chief, would you like to come up and do the honors?
I would. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. An exciting night for us, welcoming three new members to the Apple Valley Police Department. We've got a long history of bringing them in and introducing them to the council. And we also have kind of a new tradition of their families coming up and pinning their badges on. But for us, it means welcoming them to our department. And as you see out, there's a lot of people from our department here that are here to support them. And it's important for our families to know that when they're not at home with you as a family, they are with this other family. And I think most importantly, why we bring them to you to be sworn in is so that they and their families know they have a supportive department, they have a supportive council, and they have a supportive community that are all here. So without further ado, I'm going to start with Officer Danny Gerbitz here.
Nick, as you do that, we just like to invite families who'd like to get pictures to feel free to position yourself wherever you can get the best picture. So if you want to slide this way or that way, don't hesitate to do that.
So Danny grew up in southern Wisconsin. She has a bachelor's degree in social work from the University of Wisconsin, Whitewater. We won't hold any of the Wisconsin stuff against her, especially not during football season here.
Wait a minute. I'm a Whitewater guy.
Okay, well, fellow alum there, yeah. She worked in the psychological consultation business prior to coming to our police department. She attended a certification and skills training at Rasmussen College here in the metro. And an interesting fact about Danny, she really enjoys outdoor activities. So when she's not here, she does enjoy hiking, camping, and being out. And I will let her advise anyone that's here that you want to recognize that's here with you tonight.
Yeah, my husband, my mom, my sister-in-law, my girlfriend here, mother-in-law, and then other family friends.
Next is Officer Nathan Petey. He grew up in Winona, Minnesota. He has a bachelor's degree in business management from St. Mary's University. And then he too attended skills and the certification training at Rasmussen College. You'll see there's a connection there. Plenty of folks coming from Rasmussen, which we like. An interesting fact about Officer Petey, he owned and operated a successful medical treatment business prior to coming into law enforcement. And his company produced a product called Wartrun, which is kind of a name brand that you might be familiar with. And I'll let him explain who's with him tonight.
Sure. So I have first my wife, Katie, my two boys, Callum and Levi, my parents, Steve and Dad Petey, my uncle Steve, a lot of brothers-in-law and sister-in-law. So I'm very happy to be here. And then I am happy to see so many officers that have had a significant role in me getting to this point. Officer Klein, my FTO, and then Deputy Chief Allstrom, one of my instructors at Rasmussen. So it's great to see so many of you guys here, and I appreciate all the support.
And next is Officer Alex Walker. Probably looks familiar to you. He's been around here for a while. Typically, when I, when I put together the bios to present to you, I save them from when the folks start. They send an introduction out to the whole department. But he's been here so long that I didn't have that email saved anymore because he's in different roles. So he grew up in Apple Valley and attended the Apple Valley High School. He has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice leadership from St. Mary's University. And he's been with the police department from a very young age, probably 14, 15. Since the age of 15, we started him as a police explorer. He then started as a community service officer, and then became a licensed police officer once the schooling was done. So he's been with us for a long time. An interesting fact about Officer Walker is in his spare time, he enjoys stock and crypto trading. So if you have any extra stock in crypto around that you need a little advice, talk to Alex. And anyone, Alex, do you want to mention this with you?
Yeah, my mom, my dad, three of my brothers, a couple aunt, a couple uncle.
Okay, excellent. So I think now we'll invite the city clerk to come up and issue their oath of office. We're going to do that up here. So again, if people want to move around as we're doing the oath, feel free to come up and grab pictures if you guys want to.
She must be doing it here.
Please raise your right hand. We need to open the city office. Aye.
This is better. Aye, Nathan Petey. Aye, Alex Walker.
You solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the State of Minnesota, and faithfully discharge the duties of the officers of police officers of the City of Apple Valley, and the County of Dakota, and the State of Minnesota, to the best of my judgment and ability, so long may God.
Now, we will invite their families to come up, whichever selected family members or their whole families, to take their badges and pin them on. So folks, if you want to come on up. So again, just want to introduce these folks to you, and thank you for allowing us the opportunity to introduce them to the community, and to allow us a few minutes to appreciate their service and make sure their family knows that they're taken care of here. And if you'd like, usually the council likes a good handshake as you go on. Once we are finished, I'd appreciate a couple of minutes to go out and take some pictures, and we'll kind of clear the room for you. So it's back to business.
After we do the introduction, I'd like to say just one quick thing before you guys scoot, but come on up. We'd like to welcome you first, so.
Some Whitewater bars, will we? Congratulations.
Welcome. Congrats. It's a fun trip. Good to see you.
Good for you. Well, stick to it.
Thanks for staying with us.
My dog has barked at him. I haven't home in years, so. Guys, welcome. To all, to all three of you, welcome. We are exceptionally proud of this department. Not only do we feel safe, we feel well-served and well-taken care of. And if you look at the newsletter, even the calls from the log, I think, tell that story, right? It's more than, more than the stuff that makes the headlines. It's how you do the job every day, and that goes to everyone in this room. Hard not to be proud when you look at all the support that shows up for what might be mundane in another, in another place, right? Folks are missing dinner to come welcome their new colleagues officially, and that's pretty cool. So welcome, stay safe. We're proud of you. We're happy to have you on the team. Tom, do you have something else to ask?
Thank you, Mayor, for bringing that up. I just wanted to say, I've always said, as a city council member, the two most important public sector jobs are public safety and public school teachers. And I don't know which one is more important, but it's the most honorable. You're part of a tremendously honorable profession, and you've got tremendous support from this city council. So welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. We'll give everybody a few minutes to just kind of find their way to the door who would like to go leave and take some pictures before we start the next item. So take your time.
Nobody's left.
Yeah, big, big surprise, right? I know Ron won't take it personally, so. All right, we'll go ahead and get started with the next item on our agenda, which is 5B. And that is to receive the Minnesota Green Step Cities Level 5 recognition. And Charles, why don't you come on forward and walk us through this one?
Good evening, Mayor and members. I'm Charles Gross, Assistant City Administrator for the City of Apple Valley. And tonight, we are going to be doing, receiving a recognition for the Green Step Cities, which we'll learn a little bit more in the, in the brief moments here. But just as a background, it is a program that we've been working on for more than a decade. And it's about the city working in many different ways to improve our sustainability. So it's something that has been a long time in the making. And because of COVID, we received this award actually last year during the distancing. So we are doing this tonight because we can all be together. I do want to recognize a couple people real quick first. Jessica Schaum is with us tonight, National Resources Coordinator. She's done a lot of the work putting together the documentation that's necessary for this, to participate in this program. So thank you very much, Jessica. And then we'll introduce Diana McKeown, who's going to talk to us about this program. You may recognize her because she was with the city about 14 years ago now, when we did the Better Energy Program. And she worked very closely with us then. So I apologize. I just ran from downstairs. I'm still catching my breath.
Good evening. How are you? Sorry. Exciting stuff. So I'm Diana McKeown, and I work for the Great Plains Institute, which is one of the partners for Green Step Cities program. It's a private, private-public partnership, a couple of state agencies, a bunch of nonprofits, and others that come together. And Apple Valley has been involved since the get-go. When we were creating the program, we convened a task force of city employees and electeds and state agents, a bunch of folks across the state to really kind of help us form it. And Mayor Mary was one of the co-chairs because she was the chair of the LMC at the board at the time, and her theme was sustainability. So she co-chaired that event. And the program launched in 2010. So the first year you could get recognized for joining the program was 2011, which is what happened with Apple Valley. You're one of our inaugural members. So it's very exciting to be here, and I was part of the program from the get-go as well. So you achieved both step four and five this year. And there are 31 cities that are currently at step five. So it's out of 147 cities, you're at that top level of 31 cities. Just wanted to mention a couple of notable actions and things that you guys have done over the years. And he mentioned Better Energy Apple Valley. Of course, I smiled because I was really part of that. Hello, Mr. Lowell. Good to see you. It's been a while. And, you know, really great campaign, partnering with local energy utilities, nonprofits, to really help homeowners achieve energy efficiency, reduce their energy use. There were 793 homeowners that attended workshops, 98% completed audits. Just so you know, the rate is usually like 3%, 4%, 5%. Like, that's the level of engagement we had. 16, over 16,000 CFLs were installed. That was before LEDs. And 759 low-flow showerheads. There was $437,000 in life-saving savings from all of these measures. You know, I know that the Apple Valley businesses have worked with Dakota Electric and CenterPoint on energy efficiency, 100 projects or so, saving over $285,000. So long, long, you know, lots of things that you've done. The recognition of the business waste reduction, the ARO program, 44, so there's 130 businesses and 44 of them are located in Apple Valley. It's pretty impressive. 100% of your traffic mics are LED. You've seen an increase in the number of citizen Lake River water quality monitors from 16 in 2019 to 25 in 2021. So even through the pandemic, maybe that's where, you know, people found a way to get out in the, in the nature while they were at home. And then increased the percent of Lake River and wetline shoreline, wetland shoreline with at least 50 feet vegetation buffers from 45.7% in 2019 to 57% in 2021. So that's just a few things I wanted to highlight. A couple of things. Super honored to be here. And I've actually had this one on my desk for a while. We, we never quite did a handoff. So this is the step three that will go next to your step one and step two. It looks like building blocks because they are. And then this is the step four and five placard. And there's a couple of the 2021 blocks, and then we've got these 2022 blocks that I don't want to adhesive, put on here yet until you put the other ones on. I'm afraid I'll do it wrong, and then they'll be stuck there. But we love, love, love to take pictures with the city council. And I don't know if you have a staff person that's going to take a picture, but always one with my iPhone so that I can Twitter it. And we took a fine, too. So do you want me to come up there?
Should we come down there? They're all kind of on the same level there. And then we'll get your question once she's.
I had a couple of them, but.
Okay. It was like, oh, questions. You're part of the program. I mean, you can't leave anything alone. It's not Hotel California.
Sure, that would be, that would be great to be.
And we can even have, you know, a couple people hold the awards, Mayor.
Sure.
Want to hold the award?
Yeah, you're an award holder.
Oh, we got to squeeze together?
I moved it further closer. Now we got to make the picture tighter.
Uh-oh, what's what?
Is that government camera working? Eddie, are you good with yours?
Perfect. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. I mean, really an honor. You guys have done such great work over the years. Like I said, early, early on, and really committed, really committed businesses, especially your program, really have a lot of businesses. So am I staying here because you have questions?
Councilmember Bergman had a question. We'll let him get back in front of the microphone so those at home can hear before he asks. Both of those at home, it is.
Welcome. Thank you. I have two questions. First of all, in the, it's amazing when you look back when this started. But in the last six months, we as elected officials have really taken a bath on sustainability and what we're, haven't been doing. And I would like to see that staff puts on their website, wherever else it goes, through social media, what has been accomplished. And it's a long process, but some of the stuff that you had stated, I think, needs to get out to the general public. My other question, so that's question number one. And I, I really, and also, we have a staff member back there, and that staff member going through all the times that we've taken a rap, has really gotten a lot of kudos. So I want to make sure that she's recognized for what she has done. The question I would have is, okay, we've gone through, we're at step five. We have, when you go out onto that, your page, you see how many cities, and some of our surrounding cities only have two or three, the other ones, as you stated, have had, are at number five. What is the succession from now till whenever? What is next for what the cities have to do or what your organization wants us to do?
Awesome. I agree. And I actually worked with Jessica when she was at a different city before she came here. And you guys have done a lot of work. And you can put a link on your website to the Green Step Cities page, Apple Valley's page, that would show, you don't have to recreate and put all that information on your website. You can just put a link that has.
See this?
All those things, yeah, absolutely. You can highlight certainly on your website some of the things you've done. So when we first started the program, we started in 2010, we launched it with three steps. And quickly, cities, some of them around you, got to step three and wanted to know what's next. And we had to have a real, we had a deep conversation about whether we just asked cities to do more best practices, or do we try to go deeper? And, and we decided that it was really important to go deeper because people were doing the best practice, but we didn't have any metrics. And of course, over the past several years, that's a bigger and bigger thing, a more important thing. And so steps four and five are actually more metric-based. So you create in four a baseline. And then to get to step five, you have to have improvement in three of those metrics. And so actually, you only, you achieve step four and five each year. So next year, to get five again, you would need to improve in three metrics. And so that keeps going. That's why there's lots of space on here.
You don't go from five to six?
There's no six at this point. I mean, yeah. I mean, and again, you know, this program, you know, at first was three, and then, okay, they got there. What do we do now? And, you know, now we've got this. So, you know, we, we had no idea in 2010 that, you know, 12 years later, this, you know, we'd be at five and people wanting more. So, yeah, so each year, and it's just, again, it's about improving in those metrics, measurable items, whether it's reduced emissions or increased renewable energy, you know, or, you know, whatever the metric is, there's a number of them in there, and you just have to improve on three of them.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you back there.
Councilmember, whoops, Councilmember Goodwin, you had a.
Well, I just wanted to stress, and Councilmember Bergman asked about it, and you stressed that five is as high as you can go.
Five is the highest you can go.
And I also want to back up Councilmember Bergman. I think we've taken some real strong shots over sustainability this year. Well, this is a political year. And I've seen some political cheap shots, and that's one of them. We know as a council that our sustainability level's been very high. And I appreciate you coming in and telling us that.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Tom. Councilmember Grendal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much for coming tonight and sharing what we have done in the city. I think it's been overstated. People that have given us some criticism. It's a, it's a handful of people out of a city of 60,000 people. So I think you've overstated a bath and taken a rap. It's a handful of people. And like, like we said, it's an election year. One thing I always take pride in is we get our CenterPoint, where we compare with our neighbors. And so I'm 20, 27% lower than the efficient neighbors. And I think people should look at these. I think these are taken seriously because you know individually what we're all doing in our households and.
Well, and I'll just say, you know, back when we did the B-Energy campaign, we really tried to get a lot of people to do those energy audits and take action to reduce their energy use. It's been a long time. We could certainly do another campaign of some sort to encourage people. There's the Home Energy Squads. There's lots of really great tools and resources out there. We can come out and do a workshop on, you know, what are the ways that you can reduce energy so they can get even better scores.
That'd be great.
And we've added, you know, to that, right? We've added the, the WaterSmart piece in there as well. So even the utilities that we're providing, we've got a way to kind of get to that same thing, right? Where you can look at your own usage. So, you know, that low-flow showerhead that went in my house, they're all still there, and they also work, which is.
Were you doubtful?
I don't know. It just.
It's always a plus.
We call them high-efficiency, not low-flow. Language matters.
High-efficiency what?
Instead of low-flow, we call them high-efficiency.
Okay.
It's just, you know, here, politicians, language matters.
Yeah. Thanks for being here.
Thank you so much.
We appreciate the award. We mentioned promoting some of this. I think we've done some of that work already. Did Charles duck away? Charles, I know we've got some of this on the website. You can Google Green Cities and find all of our stuff as well. I know you did some recent work to not only talk about the Green Cities piece that we've done, but the other things that maybe fall outside of the Green Cities criteria as well. So we just encourage folks to go to the website, look at that. And I would just, you know, pile on the, the Jessica kudos as well because it's one thing to be the, you know, the coordinator of all the things, but actually to be able to go out and have quality conversations with residents and help them understand why and what they're doing and why that's important. That's every bit as important as having the technical knowledge. So thank you for being a good ambassador, too.
Congratulations.
Thank you. With that, speaking of important public sector jobs, Pam has an election update for us.
Oh, yes.
I hear a rumor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and members of the viewing audience. I'm Pamela Gackstetter, City Clerk and Election Administrator for the City of Apple Valley. And supporting me tonight are two of my awesome head judges, Michelle Mueller and Anita Burke. So thank you for joining me this evening. So I'd like to take a few minutes to talk about the upcoming general election. The city and state general election will be held on Tuesday, November 8, and polls will be opened from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Across the country, the midterm election is on many people's minds. And there are also many questions about voting. Some may be wondering if they are eligible to vote. In order to vote, you must be 18 years of age or older on Election Day, a United States citizen, and resided in Minnesota for 20 days preceding the election. Any felony conviction must be completed or discharged, and you must not have had your voting rights revoked by a court. You must not have been found. You must not have been found legally incompetent by a court, and you must be registered to vote. Individuals wondering if they are registered or wishing to check their registration status or view a sample ballot can visit the Secretary of State's website at minvotes.org. Those not currently registered can still register at the polls on election day if they provide identification or proof of residence. If you're wondering what type of identification or proof of residence you need to register to vote, the easiest method of providing proof and the most commonly used form is a valid Minnesota driver's license or identification card. There are many other methods as well. And a list of all acceptable forms can be found on the Secretary of State's website. If you are wondering where you vote, the city's website, cityofapplevally.org, has a precinct map and a list of polling locations as well as a number of voter resources and links. Although there are no changes from the polling locations used at the primary election in August, there were several boundary changes earlier this year. As a result of redistricting following the decennial census, 11 precincts had a boundary change. They are precincts four, five, six, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, and 16. Five precincts had no boundary change. Those are precincts one, two, three, seven, and eight. Everyone in Dakota County was sent a postal verification card with their new precinct. But we do encourage everyone to visit minvotes.org to confirm their precinct and polling location. If you're wondering if you can vote absentee, the answer is yes. In addition to voting at the polls, there is an option for anyone to vote absentee beginning 46 days prior to the election. An absentee ballot may be requested online at minvotes.org, and it will be mailed to you. Or residents can vote absentee at the municipal center Monday through Friday before the election from 8:00 AM to 4:30. And then we have extended hours on November 5th, 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM, and November 7th, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. This year, over 5,300 absentee ballot ballots have been requested. Of Apple Valley's almost 36,000 registered voters, that means approximately 14% have requested an absentee ballot. And over 3,300 ballots have been returned. Ballots may be returned via USPS, courier, or hand delivered to an election official at the municipal center. I would like to take this time to remind voters who have not yet returned their absentee ballot to return them soon. What is early voting, you ask? The week immediately preceding the election, residents may vote by early voting. This option is only available at the municipal center, not the Western Service Center, and it's during the period of November 1st through November 7th. Voters may personally place their ballot directly into the ballot tabulator. However, you may not insert an absentee ballot you've received in the mail. Not only is early voting more cost effective and efficient than casting ballots by the absentee voting method, but it provides voters important feedback regarding potential error marks on their ballot, which may prevent one or more votes from being cast in the manner in which it was intended. For example, in Dakota County, voters must fill in the oval next to their candidate's name. If by chance a voter did not read the instructions and circled their candidate's name, although the voter believes they made their selection, the voting equipment is unable to read that mark and will not count that vote. During early voting, a voter that inserts a ballot mark like this into the tabulator will get a warning message that the ballot is blank. And that gives the voter an opportunity to correct their ballot. This is the same opportunity voters receive at the polling, at their precincts on election day. Perhaps you're wondering who will help you when you go to vote. This fall, the city council appointed over 300 judges and election officials to work the general election, which brings us to almost 500 appointments this year. Election judge training was done online, and all judges have completed a minimum of two hours of training. Head judges receive in-person training as well as online training and complete a minimum of three hours, and most will complete six to seven hours this year. New judges and judges who wanted a refresher also completed a one and a half hour pole pad lab. We truly have awesome judges, and I have absolutely the most amazing head judges. Our judges truly play a critical role in building and sustaining public trust in the electoral process. Their strong sense of civic service to our community and commitment and dedication to our democracy is the reason Apple Valley's elections are amongst the best. Our election judges are ready and willing to serve voters on election day. If you ask whether your vote will count or if the results are accurate, the answer is yes, your vote will count. And yes, the results are accurate. In preparation for the general election, 18 ballot tabulators, accessible voting equipment, and ballot boxes have been tested and retested with primary and backup flashcards. Over 800 test ballots have been prepared, and over 4,000 ballots have been tested and retested in the equipment. Precinct tests have been completed with 100% accuracy. And we successfully transmitted test absentee ballot and precinct results to Dakota County. On November 1st at 1:00 PM, two judges of different political parties will participate in a public accuracy test. And I will demonstrate and prove to the judges that the ballots match the zero tapes and the results tapes agree with the predetermined results of the test deck. Perhaps you're wondering what it takes to run an election. Administering the election is a very big job. And to do it well, it takes a lot of resources, financial and physical resources, lots of physical space, the right equipment and supplies, money to pay judges and rent facilities. A lot of people, human resources, staff, election judges, head judges, and election officials, and a lot of time. Election tasks are primarily paper centric and very labor intensive. Preparation started in December of last year, securing polling places. There was redistricting in February and March, soliciting applicants for judges from June, January through September. And then the city council appointed judges June, September, and October, and training was done in July and October. And our last head judge training will be done next week. In addition, we held 21 classes or pole pad labs where judges learned how to use that equipment. And we conducted healthcare facility outreach at our four healthcare facilities. And I worked with representatives from those facilities so election judges could be on site to pre-register their residents and then assist them in applying for and receiving absentee ballots. Then there was publishing and posting all the legal notices as required by law. And as I mentioned earlier, testing the equipment, ordering and packing supplies, receiving absentee ballot applications daily and processing as many as 250 online applications in a single day, administering in-person absentee voting, serving many voters each day. And early voting, which starts next week, is expected to bring in around 2,000 voters, convening the absentee ballot board four to eight times a week, and opening and counting absentee ballots. Election officials and judges will begin opening accepted absentee ballots starting next week. And of course, responding to hundreds of emails, voicemails, and in-person inquiries. Thankfully, I've had an amazing help from administration, finance, police, planning, and public works. In particular, I want to recognize Stephanie Marshall, Janey Marthy, Penny Stewart, Anita Burke, Missy Nelson, Lisa Reiten, Brandy Aiken, Mary Klein, Mary DeVall, Michelle Mueller, Terry Henchell, Jolie Bubna, Brianna Vincent, and Mary Ann Lance, who have all played key roles in helping make one amazing election team. They pitch in and do whatever is necessary, and I truly can't thank them enough. And I'd like to take this opportunity to publicly say thank you to my outstanding election team for their extraordinary efforts. I'm also very grateful for many other staff members and election judges who serve on the absentee ballot board as well as several retirees, including former city clerk Mary Mueller. Apple Valley's polling locations are safe, secure, and accessible. And thanks to the expertise, dedication, and professionalism of our election judges, they are efficient and accurate. Apple Valley's elections truly are open, fair, and honest. We work hard to build the public trust. Apple Valley residents can have confidence that we uphold and we follow election laws. And our residents can be proud to know that Apple Valley's elections truly have integrity. And I want to close by reminding everyone to exercise their right to vote next, on Tuesday, November 8th. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Pam, thank you. Are there, I guess there are. Ruth, go ahead.
After all this work, are you still standing?
Because I have people to support me, yes.
Thank you, Pam.
Yes.
300, 500 people total, right of?
The council has appointed for election judges to work the primary and general this year.
Huge.
Yeah.
While that's a paid position, that's a volunteer position, right?
That's not, that's people wanting to step up and part of that process.
It is.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm watching all of that and thinking, wouldn't that make it great? Like behind, you know, like the How It's Made TV series, right? Just to see all the behind the scenes stuff. With that, we're going to move on to proclaiming November 26th, 2022, as Small Business Saturday. And Charles, do you want to come up? And, you know, Ed, would you like to come up as well?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Much better, I got to catch my breath now. So Small Business Saturday is a, a great opportunity for us to support our small businesses. Everyone is pretty familiar with Black Friday when a lot of the bigger box stores put a lot of advertisements out and there's a lot of shoppers who go out there. And of course, there's Cyber Monday. But small businesses are really the bread and butter of many communities, including Apple Valley. And it's important to remember and recognize those businesses in this holiday shopping season. And so this is a proclamation that we do every year to try to encourage our residents to, to patronize our small businesses and remember them and their shopping. And tonight, we've got Ed Purney with the, the Apple Valley Chamber, and he's got a few things that he can add to. We often read the proclamation. Mr. Mayor, were you planning to read it?
You know, we rehearsed this so well in our pre.
Yeah.
I'm, I am happy to read this and then we can have Ed come up and take any other comments as well, if that would work. And then we don't forget to actually do the proclamation because sometimes we do that. So I will go and read that whereas the city of Apple Valley celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 32.5 million small businesses in the United States, and they represent 99.7% of firms with paid employees and are responsible for 62% of net new jobs created since 1995. And whereas 79% of consumers understand the importance of supporting the small businesses in their community on Small Business Saturday, 70% report the day makes them want to encourage others to shop small, independently owned retailers, and 66% report that the day makes them want to shop small all year long. And whereas 58% of shoppers reported that they shopped online with a small business, and 54% reported they dined or ordered takeout from a small business bar or a cafe on Small Business Saturday in 2021. And whereas the city of Apple Valley supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, preserve our communities. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Apple Valley, Dakota County, Minnesota hereby proclaims November 26th, 2022 as Small Business Saturday in Apple Valley and encourages residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Do I have a motion to approve?
It's moved.
Okay.
Motion from Bergman, second from Grendel. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose that carries. Ed, come on up and share a few words. There's a fresh new copy for you as well.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city administrator, department heads and department heads, we want to thank, first of all, before we talk about that, everything that the city did on behalf of the candidate forum. We just hosted a candidate forum this past Wednesday, and it was spectacular. It was done by the city on behalf of the businesses. It's the only forum in the city, so it's a really good chance for the public to see it. And without the city and also with the newspaper, Patty's newspaper right here, who they agreed to put that in their paper as well. The citizens really have a chance to look at all the candidates. As a chamber of commerce, we do not have a political action committee. All the candidates, the 20 years I've been here, always say, we're so fair. We're right down the middle, make no judgment. So we hope the public looks at the city website or the Chamber of Commerce website or Facebook or the, what they list for links in the newspaper and take a look at all the candidates statewide and locally here. We just wanted to thank the city for filming that with your team. It looks like very, very professional. Also with the, here's last year's proclamation. I just brought this to show you that we take this very seriously. This isn't just like, talk about this tonight and then it goes in a drawer. This we display prominently throughout the year, a reminder to us and everybody that, how important this is. American Express is really the ones that really started the thing years ago, a decade ago or whatever, and it's been a great success. Last year, when we were working with the city to do that, when we, AMEX requires it to use their ads and then you have like a little tagline with basically your locals. So we decided last year to not use that approach. And all of our advertising and promotion is all done with organic ads just for Apple Valley. And we think that has a bigger, a much bigger impact. And I might add that we're going to be heavy into Facebook, heavy into Instagram, heavy on Twitter. But also now that the candidates have all done most of their advertising up till the 8th, it'll get inexpensive, and we're going to go heavy right after that. We have some professional ads being made this week, actually. And then as you get really close to Christmas, it gets really expensive. So we're going to be taking attractions, restaurants and all that and trying to, instead of doing it all by ourselves, kind of go along with them and help promote them using their content. And we think it'll make a bigger splash in a smaller pond that way. I almost, I also might add that we're going to try to amplify the zoo, the shops, be it like a Main Street boutique or Charming Lily, and some of the real unique things. We're also going to take an approach that instead of just talking about shopping, we want to really tie it, we become a dining destination and not just in the evening, during the day as well. And so we want to really promote it like, are you forgetting someone? Bring a friend, bring a family member, go shopping and show them eating lunch and having a glass of wine in that while they're shopping. Make it a lot better. They can really make a bigger impact that way. And we think that the, the main theme that we want to have is if you shop small, you save big. So we want that to be, and all the, everything except for the print ads are all going to be snow falling, just as we did last year. So it really catches in motion everything. So you can't go to that page without seeing that. So we want to thank the partnership that the city and the Chamber of Commerce and the Convention and Visitor Bureau altogether really make this happen, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate you being here for this too. And Tom, you've got a question?
Yeah, I'd like to actually make a point. John Bergman, well, actually, all three of us here are running for election this year. And I've been asked a few times if I'm a Democrat or a Republican, and these chairs up here are non-political chairs.
Correct. You're nonpartisan.
And I want to make a big point of that, because people are still confused about that.
If you look at anything that we've posted, it'll say right there that whether you're Democrat or Republican, it also says if you're an incumbent or not. And then, we didn't put the word challenger, we just put the word incumbent, and they'll have to assume the rest. And then, like the Senate race, for example, we actually put in parentheses right on the, before you even click on it, that the Senator Clausen has decided not to run again, so that they know why there's two candidates they've never heard of. We made it really clear, along, and that was done with your audiovisual people downstairs. We sat there last week and went through each one to make sure the most information could go to the voter. So, if you look at yours when you go online, anything we posted or the city's posted, it's clear right on the splash page that you get to before you even start.
I want to bring us back to Small Business Saturday for just a second, and just, I think we all have an idea of what small business might be, right? But a couple categories always kind of come to mind, is I think, is small business. And especially what we have going on in Apple Valley. You mentioned restaurants, right? Home Shock is being built literally just down the street. Now, they won't be open in time for this campaign, but what a cool destination that's going to be. And we have many of those things that are unique in Apple Valley, you're just not finding them elsewhere, so, right? And that helps all businesses get there. But the ones I think get overlooked, right, are these franchise owners who often get overlooked in small business conversations.
Correct.
And so, I take, and I'll pick on, you know, Mike Buddy at Culvers, right? One of the best local business owners I know, but often gets overlooked in these things because, well, it's a franchise. Well, it is, but I know Mike is, there's something going on tonight down there that is supporting something local in the community, so don't overlook those folks in your spending as well.
That's a great suggestion. We will make it clear that franchise, you hear the word franchise, it means local.
Yep. And one, just one other piece that comes to mind, as I'm driving around this last weekend, are those who are supporting small businesses. So, I look at the business, the business parks that Mark Hebert has built in town over the years, including, including one that's about to see its next new life, right? So, you guys, you can buy Lincoln on Small Business Saturday, too, right? That's going to be an option, you can do that as well, right? But, so, it's kind of fun to see that. Mark has built places that really help incubate small businesses and give them a place to grow into something else. And again, we tend to overlook those as we think of retailers, but these businesses wouldn't be there without folks like that building a space for them to start and kind of grow into. So, lots we can be proud of around Small Business Saturday and small businesses in Apple Valley.
And we want all our businesses, big and large, chains, everybody, the big box to succeed, but behind the scenes, a big box will take their money and put it in the bank overnight, and it's off to Atlanta, or New York, or wherever the next day. If you're a local business, it stays here in a local bank, and it circulates, sometimes six, seven times, it'll circulate over and over. That makes a huge impact.
Yep, exactly. Thank you. We look forward to seeing the advertisements. I think we all look forward to seeing some other advertisements come out on about the 9th, so anything you can run is going to.
Thank you. And I might note that Councilman Bergman, he had mentioned me last year, and also this year, to make sure with all the new restaurants going on the other side of town, the east side, that we really want to be careful to really promote there, and, you know, the new, and what's down here, because the last thing we want to see is cannibalizing downtown businesses, taking everything out there. We want people to go to both and try both, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you, you brought that up last year and this year.
Big deal. Thank you, Ed, and Charles, thank you for reading this both together.
Thank you. Can we get a photo, and we'll put it in our, we'll step over here.
Yeah, we can do a real quick one. Yeah, we'll just, yeah, just do that. There, take that one with you, too, please.
Stand.
You're used to it, is that the?
Let me take a couple with mine just as a backup real quick. Perfect, thank you.
All right. Perfect. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks. We spent a few minutes on that item, and there have been prior years where that's been a consent item, and I think it's worth spending a few minutes recognizing our local businesses, so thanks for indulging that. Moving on to item 5E, which is to adopt a resolution providing for issuance and sale of 9,995,000 of general obligation bonds, Series 2022A.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
On all yours.
I was the council. Tom is going to call up something, but before we begin, the mayor mentioned the bond sale for this year. We did distribute the results of the bond sale just this afternoon and left it at the council desk, along with an updated resolution that includes, it's the same resolution as was distributed, just all the blanks were filled in. So, just want to point out that within this bond issue for 2022 is two components. There's a $2 million stormwater bond, revenue bond, paid by the stormwater utility, and then there's the other 7,995,000, which is the capital improvement bonds issued under the authority from the 2021 through '25 facilities capital improvement plan. So, but with that, with every bond issue, and we have Tammy Umdahl, our financial advisor with Northland Securities, here with us, and she is going to present the results of the bond sale. But before that, just wanted to take a minute, as part of the bond sale, we do seek credit ratings from both Standard and Poor's and Moody's. We do have the AAA bond ratings have been reaffirmed or confirmed by both agencies for the coming bond issue. And both Moody's and Standard and Poor's note strong financial operations of the city, ample reserves, providing budgetary flexibility, and a very strong debt profile, which in their ideas, eyes, is low debt per capita. And only, we just want to point out that only 10 Minnesota cities have achieved both AAA ratings from both agencies, out of the 854 cities in Minnesota. And if anybody's curious who those 10 are, here's just a slide that lists them out there. But, very good company to be part of. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over, invite Tammy Umdahl with Northland Securities to come up and present the results of the bond sale.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Tammy Umdahl with Northland Securities. Ron has already covered the purpose of the sale and the affirmation of the city's rating, so I'm here to speak to the results. This morning, we took bids on behalf of the city on the sale of the 9,995,000 of bonds. There were five bids received. The low bid was from Stifel out of Alabama, Birmingham, Alabama. And the final true interest cost, and we evaluate the bids based upon true interest cost, was 4.27%. When the city council set the sale at that time, given current market conditions in September, we had estimated approximately 4.3%. So, that means that the final results are within the parameters of the city's plans, your plans for the tax levy to support these bonds as well. So, very good results, reflective of the city's two AAA ratings as well. With that, Mr. Mayor, council members, happy to answer any questions that you may have. You do have a packet almost of information in front of you, but my comments focused on the first page, so thank you.
Other questions for Tammy? We've done this once or twice, and we appreciate the support in both the rating calls and the positive outcome. With that, we would take a motion to adopt the resolution providing for the issuance and sale of $9,995,000 in general obligation bonds, Series 2022A.
So, move.
Second. Pick whoever.
I'll pick, sounds like a motion from Bergman and a second from Melander to me. All in, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, and that item carries, Ron and Tammy, thank you.
Ron, thanks a lot. Thanks for everything.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry, I missed you completely.
Just a quick note for, for folks that may not be accountant, and I can't claim to be sophisticated along these lines either, but the lower the interest rate, the less it's going to cost the city, the more bang we get out of the buck, which is a reflection of the credit rating that we talked about in the beginning.
Correct, correct. Thank you. All right, we will move on to item 5G, which is the Apple Valley-Lincoln redevelopment, and Kathy's going to walk us through this one.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. The petitioner for this request, petitioner, as I should say, Gobernson Real Estate, Apple Auto Properties, and Apple Ford Lincoln, Apple Valley, have been going through a process, and the plant, or the city council probably remembers back maybe to last spring already, when Apple Lincoln had brought some plans forward, and there have been a number of steps taken, so just wanted to kind of recap that. So, in February, the planning commission held the public hearing for conditional use permit. February, city council postponed a public hearing for a vacation, and instead held it on March 10th. Based on feedback received on the 10th, Lincoln went back and revised their plans. May 4th, the planning commission made a recommendation to approve of the project. June 16th, the city council approved a private installation agreement. So, a number of steps have been taken, and this is the next step to get going on the, on the project. So, the petitioners will be requesting three actions tonight, completing a vacation of Gardenia Avenue, conditional use permit for outdoor sales and displays of vehicles, connection with an auto dealership, and then site plan review, building permit authorization for a 22,000 square foot Lincoln dealership building. The subject property is located on the southwest corner of County Road 42 and Gardenia Avenue at 7125 151st Street. The site is 2.43 acres and currently contains five buildings. It's a former auto mall site. The Ulta survey shows the existing buildings on the site, again, the, the existing auto To vacate the right-of-way, the city needs to make a determination that the right-of-way is no longer needed, that it no longer serves a public purpose, and that it's in the public interest to vacate the right-of-way. As I mentioned and went back through that timeline, the first set of plans submitted to the city by Lincoln showed vacation requests of Gardenia Avenue, but also a section of 151st Street. During the vacation process, the city learned that there were a number of private utilities within 151st Street. In fact, the city itself has trunk utility lines within 151st Street. So, based on that information, Lincoln went back and revised their plans, and then reduced the area of the vacation. In June, as I mentioned on the timeline, Lincoln did enter into a private installation agreement with the city that will be to install a cul-de-sac to terminate 151st Street. We also were informed last week that four private utilities that were within the Gardenia right-of-way area have been relocated, so they are out of that area. So, with these steps taken, staff is stating that the vacation can move forward. In addition to the vacation request, then, as the cul-de-sac is completed, as the construction is completed, Lincoln will be dedicating right-of-way for the cul-de-sac bulb for the turnaround. So, moving on to the construction project, the project will involve removing all five buildings, raising the site. It'll be a complete tear down and scraping of the site. The overview shows the site plan, so the idea is that Apple Valley Lincoln will sit on its own separate lot, it will have its own identity, but my understanding from Apple Ford is that it will still have a campus connection with the Lincoln dealership. So, moving on to the site, site plan shows the location of the 22,000 square foot building. The front of the building faces north to County Road 42. Two access points are provided, one off of 151st Street on the southeast, and then a shared access point from Apple Ford. Conditional use permit is requested to be able to store and display vehicles on the site, and that is one of the actions that's in the, the actions this evening. Parking requirements for the site, 50 parking spaces are required, 123 are provided, so those requirements are met. Grading plan, again, total scrape, total redo. This has been reviewed by the city engineer. No outstanding questions or comments at this time. Utility plan was reviewed by the city engineer. In this case, there were a few details that had to be ironed out between the petitioner's engineer and the city engineer because of crossing services, but that did get resolved. Services will be pulled from the south, and there is a stormwater, an underground stormwater retention facility for the site. Landscape plan, city code requires value of landscape plantings to meet or exceed 2.5% of the value of construction of the building. Condition of approval will be that, as part of the building permit process, the city will look for a nursery bid list to confirm that that requirement is met. The elevation drawing showed that the exterior of the building will be constructed with insulated precast panels. The exterior finish will be a combination of concrete, metal, and face brick, so a nice variety of treatments. And then, the 3D modeling shows the exterior of the building. Again, this would be the view from the northeast, the County Road 42 view. This is northwest, and then the southwest. This drawing is actually, has been updated to provide additional awnings and treatments to help break up that facade. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, at its meeting of May 4th, the planning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the conditional use permit and site plan review building permit authorization. The three motions listed in the staff report would approve the project in accordance with the planning commission recommendation. The city attorney has been working closely with staff on this, with the vacation piece of the project, especially to make sure that the private installation agreement has been executed, the project is underway, the financial guarantees have been received, and the private utilities have been addressed. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I could stand for questions if there are any, and a representative from Lincoln is here this evening.
Thanks, Kathy. Councilman Bergman has a question.
Thanks, Mayor, and I have a comment to make. I would like to thank the applicant for reinvesting in the city of Apple Valley. We hear a lot of, of good things about Apple Valley, but your, your statistics must show that it's continued growth for your business and very much appreciated. The one thing I took from your presentation, Kathy, is you showed us what they did from January till basically today. But behind the scenes, what they've done between the planning staff and going through the planning commission has been a lot longer than that. So, again, kudos to your business, but I also would, this shows the attention to detail that goes into a business to come into this city, and when the business wants to come into this city, they still go through great scrutiny to make sure it's done very proper. So, thank you for your investment.
Yeah, come on up. Let's do this. Let's, let's take the, come on up. We'll take the items and get the votes done, and happy to give you some time to just tell us what's going on, if that works.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Perfect. Let's get, let's get the votes done, and we'll do that, if that works. So, we'll start with looking for a motion to adopt the resolution completing the vacation of Gardenia Avenue.
So, move.
Second.
Motion from Grendal, a second from Melander. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Looking for a motion to adopt the resolution of approving the conditional use permit for outdoor sales and storage of motor vehicles.
So, move.
Second.
Motion from Bergman and a second from Grendal. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Motion from Bergman and a second from Grendel, all those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
And opposed, that item carries. And we're looking for a motion to adopt the resolution approving the site plan, building permit authorization for the construction of a 22,000 square foot Lincoln dealership building.
So moved. Second.
Motion from Melander, a second from Grendel, all those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
All three of those are done. All yours. Please introduce yourself and tell us what the logic.
Hey, well, yeah, thank you. Chris Gobernson with Apple Lincoln. First of all, just want to thank Kathy and Brandon for all the work on this project. Certainly, there are a lot of complications doing the private install and moving utilities, so it got a lot more complex than I ever thought it could, and they really helped us move through that. And if you drive across the street, we're digging a hole right now to get all that done, so appreciate it. I was going to comment on, on Councilmember Bergman's comments that I think it was four or five years ago, Lincoln came to us and actually offered to buy it back, because he said Apple Valley is not a luxury market, and they didn't think Apple Valley could support the Lincoln franchise. We didn't do that, you know, we've been off and on the number one Lincoln dealer in the state, and so we are this year again, and I think they've proven them wrong, and they're excited about our project, and so, yeah, we're excited to be here and think that Apple Valley is a great market, and it's tons of potential and possibility here, and so just want to thank the, the council members, mayor, and support of the city.
Absolutely. Chris, you may not know the answer to this. Years ago, and the folks I've known in the car business, there's been a number of additional business that gets generated, like every new car sale is X dollars' worth of spend in the communities where they're spent, right? You buy the car, you go out to dinner, you do, you're right, you celebrate that purchase, you do some of those kind of things. So we know on your busy Saturday, right, when you're selling a ton of vehicles, and when there's people in there, and even if they don't buy, they're also spending money at all of those businesses that are around you, and there's a, there's a huge contribution, right? So we appreciate this reinvestment there. And honestly, maybe helping the powers that be understand that Apple Valley is a luxury car buyer market, and we do want to be able to buy these things right here in town.
Yeah, yep.
Thank you.
I appreciate that.
It'd be very attractive on Apple.
It is, it is. That, that old auto mall served us well for many, many years, right? And this is going to be a huge redevelopment and a nice new look to that, so.
Yep, yeah, I spoke to Mark Hebert this morning, and he's excited about it as well, so, yeah.
Exactly. Well, thank you, Chris.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. We'll move on to staff, and thank you, Kathy, appreciate it. Move on to staff and council communications, let's throw it over to Tom. Are there items you'd like to cover here?
Mr. Mayor, just one, we're going to have our police chief, Nick Francis, come up and give us one last reminder of trunk or treat coming up here on Saturday.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As I stand in front of you, as, as in one of my favorite Halloween costumes, as the officer, just want to remind the community to come out Saturday, 11 to 1 o'clock at the Family Aquatic Center. We've got a large number of vehicles from all walks of public service that are going to be out there. Again, trunk or treat is a place where folks can come and park, and then walk around station to station to all these different vehicles and stands to trick or treat essentially, but it's a super fa, super safe, super fun atmosphere for kids. And I did see today, just because as we're getting a little closer, the weather looks pretty nice, Pam Walter went out and I saw a truckload coming back with candy sticking out of it, so she, I think, probably bought out all of Walmart and wherever else she could find, so I think it is going to be a really busy day. And in addition to, you know, getting candy and whatever, it's just an opportunity for folks to come down and interact with some of our staff, some public work staff, park staff, get in and out of our vehicles, kind of see a lot of the equipment that we have around the city and the county and so on. So we invite everyone to come down. I think it's going to be busy, but it's going to be a really fun day, Saturday from 11 to 1 at the aquatic center.
It was fun to come last year.
It was a lot of fun.
It was awesome.
Thanks, Nick, for pulling that together. I know you've got a lot of support from Public Works and Parks and everyone else to make that happen, so we appreciate that. Tom, anything else? That was it? Anything from council? I see Eric out in the audience, which reminds me, we have a small handful of days for folks to get any comments in yet on Monday the 31st. So another Halloween theme today. Monday the 31st is your deadline to get comments in on potential park change proposals that are out on the website, so. With that, we'll move on to the calendar of upcoming events. The next informal city council meeting is Thursday, November 10th at 5:30, and our next regular council meeting is Thursday, November 10th at 7:00 PM. Do we have a motion to approve the calendar?
So moved.
Motion from Grendel, a second from Bergman, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, and we'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Motion from Melander and a second from Grendel, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Or adjourned. Thanks, everyone.